Okay, why don't we go ahead and get started? We do have a forum here, so we'll get started. Hopefully Phil will be able to join us in a minute. So I'm going to call the meeting to order. This meeting of the Redding Municipal Light Department Board of Commissioners is being recorded via Zoom for distribution to the community television stations in Redding, North Redding, Wilmington, and Lynnfield. The RMLD Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of hearing public comment at the discretion of the Chair on items on the official agenda as well as on items not on the official agenda. We ask that all questions or comments from the public be directed to the Chair and that all parties, including members of the RMLD Board, act in a professional and courteous manner when addressing the Board or responding to comments. Once recognized by the Chair, all persons addressing the Board shall state their name and address prior to speaking. It is the rule of the Chair to maintain order in all public comment or ensuing discussion. So let's see, Phil is usually our Board Secretary, but if he's not here, Mr. Hennessy, would you be the Secretary this time?
Gladly, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. I'd like to move into public comment. We'll start first with the RMLD Citizens Advisory Board. And George, are you there? George Hooper was going to attend. Oh, George is not here. Okay. We've got someone connecting with audio. Okay, we may have to come back to him. Liaisons to the RMLD Board, this is Vanessa or Karen, and I don't believe they are with us tonight either, are they? No, well, they come in, we will certainly talk to them. If there's any comments from the public, we can certainly chat about that right now. I'd ask you to limit any discussion to no more than two minutes. So I'd like to open that up for public comment. Yes, Johannes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll keep this pretty brief. My name is Johannes Epka. I'm a staff attorney at Conservation Law Foundation, and I'm attending tonight because I became aware of RMLD's interest in clean energy policy that I saw on the agenda tonight and the inclusion of biomass in that policy. And would just love to caution the Board against the inclusion of biomass in any definition of clean energy and very happy to present to the Board on our concerns about biomass and the future reliance by RMLD as shown in the meeting package for the next several decades on that. And would be happy to take any questions now or during the relevant agenda sections or prepare some presentation for the Board at a future time that is convenient for you. I'll leave it at that, so thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Johannes. Thank you very much. Anyone else care to speak?
How do I do that?
I'm sorry?
I'd like to speak. I guess I didn't know I wasn't unmuted. Carolyn Whiting, I live at 17 Chestnut Road in Redding. I'm a supporter of the Greater Redding Alliance for Clean Energy, and I learned from them that RMLD has plans to purchase from a woody biomass plant proposed by developer Palmer Renewable Energy once it has been constructed. Having read the article about the proposed plant in the October 20th, 2020 issue of the Boston Globe, I don't believe that Palmer is the type of company with which I would want our local homes or businesses connected. I am concerned about high levels of carbon emissions and other emissions from biomass energies such as fine particulate matter, nitrogen oxide, sulfur dioxide, and other harmful pollutants, not only because of their contribution to climate change, but also because of harmful health effects on people living nearby. As I was born and raised in Springfield, Massachusetts, and because of my concerns regarding environmental justice in general, I'm especially concerned about the proposed location of this biomass plant in a neighborhood of Springfield that already has high levels of pollution, high numbers of people with asthma and other respiratory health issues. I expect that other residents and companies in the RMLD service area are likely to share my concerns regarding using energy generated from biomass. Thank you for your consideration of my views.
Thank you, Carolyn. We certainly appreciate that. We did see the article in the Globe, and it's been circulated to the Commissioners this past week, as it turns out. We'll be addressing some of these in a probably in a limited way here a little bit later in the conversation.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd care to speak? If not, I'd like to move on to our next.
Mr. Chairman?
John, if you've got somebody?
Yes, John?
Sorry, John Rogers, 39 Tower Hill Road in North Redding. And I just wanted to follow up and thank you all for the time during last month's meeting to talk about, in particular, the rec issue. And I know that the clean energy policy Johannes referred to is on the agenda for today. And I just wanted to come back to that because I know it's still as it was written before. I'm not sure what the process for modifying it, editing it, amending it will be. But I think what I should have done last time is, along with thanking you more, is summarize basically as we see it, there are three options. You can keep RMLD, we can keep all our recs and make claims about all that renewable energy. We can sell all our recs and have that money and not make claims about having the renewable energy. But I'd like to propose a third, you know, that there's probably something in between that where, because Chuck has very nicely laid out sort of, you know, here's what we got for recs, all that, you know, sell anything that's, you know, keep whatever we need to meet whatever target RMLD has set for a certain year. Sell anything else so that we do get that revenue and that we can make the claims up to the extent that we have those recs. So I just wanted to be clear that there are three options. We can't mix and match. We can't sell them all and still make all the claims, but we can sell some and still make claims about the ones we keep. So I just wanted that to be just clear.
Thank you, John. Certainly we'll take that under consideration. I'd like to just move on to our next item, then we'll circle back here a little bit later to chat about that. This is the report of the Citizen Advisory Board meeting that was held just a few minutes ago. I was the representative too. And since George isn't here to, oh wait, here's George.
He's logging in, yeah.
Oh, oh, good. I'll let him comment on that because we'll both be saying the same thing.
Sorry, I'm late.
That's okay.
I found a link. Everybody?
Right, right. This is very fortunate, George, because we're right at the point of view reporting on the Citizens Advisory Committee that we were just, we just came from.
Oh, perfect. Yeah, actually, we just went through a presentation by Ameed and Wendy. We had the operating budget and the capital budget. Both presentations went well. I won't give out the amounts. I'll let you guys, when you get the presentation, but I found it to be very informative and I think it was very well laid out.
Thank you, George. And both motions were approved unanimously to approve the
Correct.
Budget and the capital budget.
You're not reviewing that tonight, are you, in your meeting?
I think we'll wait to have it presented to the
I thought you needed time for review and then.
That's correct. Exactly right. We're at item number six, which is approval of the board minutes. And there's a motion attached to that, which I believe Phil would usually read, but since Mr. Hennessy is filling in for him, perhaps you could read that, approval of more minutes, action item. Dave? Oh, you're on mute? Yeah.
And I don't have it right here in front of me.
Okay.
Does anybody else on the Board have it?
I have it, but I can't read it. I mean, I can't read. I can't make the motion. Dave, do you have it, Talbot?
Yeah, you want me to read off the, what, move that we approved the minutes from the two sets of minutes that are on the time, that are on the?
Yeah, there's actually, there's four sets, January 23rd, April 21st, April 30th, and May 23rd.
Yeah, I'm going to have to call the agenda. Why don't you get, give me a minute and we'll move on. I'll come back to it.
Okay, that'll be just fine. We're now moving into the General Managers Report. Ms. O'Brien? Colleen?
Sorry.
Oh, there you are. I'm sorry to see you.
Good evening, everybody. First off, I'd like to welcome Greg Phipps. He's our new Integrated Resources Division Assistant Director. And I won't introduce anybody, but we have John Stempak, who you met earlier, Dave Hennessy is one of our Board members, and Dave Talbot. And Phil Pacino is not here, and then Robert Coulter down the end. So I guess you can meet Phil next time. Greg is, he's bringing a lot of years of experience in demand management, wholesale power supply, and distributed generation. He's got a big passion for solar. He's worked extensively with other Massachusetts MLPs. He's got a bachelor's degree in electrical engineering, a master's degree in business admin. He's been here about a week. He's hit the ground running. He's doing a great job, providing lots of value, and we're really happy to have him on our team. He's succeeding Bill Selden, who will be retiring at the end of the year, along with a handful of other people. We typically during the Public Power Open House week, we have an employee appreciation day, which I think we're going to push forward in the first week of December, not only give out, you know, recognized service awards, but also, you know, let our retirees know how much we appreciated their support for the time that they've been working. So we're going to, we're going to do that in December. We'll let you know. Moving on with some community updates, I just wanted to kind of reiterate where we are on these. The new air source heat pump, which we launched in the first of October. We subsequently hired Abode Energy to help with the, not only the contractors, but the customers to provide educational and technical resource. That's going very well. We got about 35 in the queue at this time. The Virtual Public Power Week that we wanted to do some great things for the kids. We had virtual Storytime video, kids' experiment activity, energy efficiency photo scavenger hunt, the RMLD line work of video, and the Public Power in Massachusetts videos are both up on the website, so you can check those out. At the same timeframe, we had National Drive Electric Week, in which we did two virtual test drives released to raise the awareness and educate customers in plug-in vehicles. We had 93 hits on YouTube for the RMLD Bolt, and we had 189 YouTube hits on the Tesla 3, in which Redding customer Eric Kramer was kind enough to provide. Our voluntary fourth grade art contest is going really well. That's where we have the kids participate in electrical safety with prizes. This is in partnership with all of the schools in all four towns. And then the 2021 historical calendar that we do every year is getting ready to come out around Thanksgiving. Because the Board of Health has still kept 230 Ash Street public building closed, we will be putting a kiosk, you know, those ones that you typically can open and get the real estate flyer or something out of. We're going to put one of those in front of the building. And then the rest of the locations seem to be able to provide an opportunity for us to give drop-offs like we have in the past. So it's really just at our building. Other than that, everything's going well. That's my update. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
But I can take care of the minutes now, Mr. Chair, if you'd like.
Oh, yes, please. Please, thank you.
For Redding, move that the Board approve the meeting minutes of January 23rd, 2020, April 21, 2020, April 30, 2020, and May 23, 2020, on the recommendation of the General Manager.
Second.
Any discussion? That's for John to say, I guess.
Well, that's any to say that, great.
Sorry, John.
Not a problem. If there's no discussion, we just have a roll call vote. Mr. Stempak, aye?
Hennessy, aye.
Talbot, aye.
Coulter.
Thank you. We have another item here under the General Managers Report, which is the review of Board policy for policy number 30, which is the clean energy policy. And, you know, this is something that, quite frankly, why a lot of you are here tonight, really to sort of talk about and whatnot. I'm going to make two suggestions here tonight. The first is, I'd like to table the approval of that policy until November because a number of the items in the wording of that policy, I think, need to be changed. I think many of the Commissioners feel exactly the same way. So we want to be very judicious in terms of what we change in it and how we change it. And clearly, that includes, you know, future uses of any biomass. So that certainly is tangent to what we're talking about here. The second issue is, and I know you're all concerned about biomass from this particular plant. And to be very open to this and transparent, I think we were just quite unaware of the extent of the controversy surrounding this particular plant. And especially came home, I think, this week when we saw the Globe article. And then, of course, I sent it around to all the Board members. And in addition, a number of you have sent in significant amounts of both sort of information, data, links, et cetera, which we can't possibly digest. Not this week, just, you know, it's a volunteer job in the first place, right? So we will look at it. We'll take and try to do the right thing by it. And we'll certainly open it up for discussion at our next meeting, but I think it's premature for us to be, have an intelligent discussion about it tonight because you literally just gave it to us this week, actually, a couple of days ago. So we're not making any recommendations as far as that's concerned. I would like to give some guidance, though, to our General Manager in the form of a motion. And Mr. Talbot, could I ask you for making a motion?
Sure, and I'd be happy to. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I would just first make just a couple of brief comments from my perspective as one of the five Board members here. After doing a lot of reading on it, you know, it is pointing out that over the course of its lifetime, this plant would burn, you know, millions of tons of wood trucked in by a lot of tractor trailers driving up and down the Mass Pike. And it's not really a carbon-free facility. And I think that at the very highest level, I would like to see, as speaking for myself, that the 150 million that's proposed to be built, spent to build this facility would be far better spent other ways, perhaps on a very large regional grid battery that would be, you know, a boon to renewable energy, and that I would encourage all parties to, you know, start rethinking what we do here. The second thing I'd like to just point out is that, you know, has been a lot of publicity and email traffic and so on about it. It's been pointed out that the plant may technically comply with a state permit, but that the reason that this would be the case is that the Governor has proposed to weaken relevant regulations to make it so, and also to make it qualify for certain subsidies. And so it's not just an environmental, you know, groups that are opposing it. The Attorney General of the Commonwealth called those steps, those administrative steps, quote, "a step backwards." So I think it's important to remember some of that context. And third, you know, as also we've, we know, you know, a plant like this gets built when it gets contracts, and RMLD has entered into a contract to purchase the power. And I think we're all wanting to have a full understanding of all this. And so I think we need to look at that. And going forward, I hope that we, the community continues to be involved in our power supply and invoicing what they would like us to do, including some of our largest customers. You know, what kind of power would you like to see RMLD buying? And if it's going to cost a few dollars more for it to be cleaner, are you willing to support that? I think that's an important question to be asked going forward. To get back to what the Chair just said, you know, I think we want to take a look at this in light of the publicity and a lot of, in light of the many statements that we thank you for. And that would be the following, which is that, you know, move that the Board of Commissioners direct the General Manager to explore all options relative to the disposition of our Palmer biomass contract. And that would start by, starting by working with the Board to retain outside counsel not previously engaged on the issue.
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, could I call for a roll call vote?
I think Rob, Bob Coulter.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
I guess one item, you know, always concern yourself with poison pills, right? Right before something happens, there's a driver behind everything. So that said, it's very, very wise to sit back and absorb information because there might be something, there's always something behind someone telling you not to do something. So that's the, that's the first thing. And secondly, there are positive things about burning wood. You go down to the Redding compost area, right? You see a giant pile of wood that sits there. Where's that going to go? Right? That's biomass. And we all, you know, you don't think like that. You're, and that biomass gets generated all over the state. It gets generated in every town. Everyone turns their debris there. So it just sits there and accumulates, you know? There are, this is a way to burn it. It's not all negative. I just want to make that point of view present.
Thank you, Bob.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you, Bob. And I would just add, and I appreciate that comment. And, you know, one piece of this, I think that maybe even if we have different viewpoints on the merits of a particular power supply, perhaps that we as a Board should have more of a governance role over awareness of power supply, of power purchase agreements, and a voting step, and take a look at that from a governance perspective and be able to understand these things at the Board level. And again, to come back and hear from our community, whether it's the viewpoint that Bob just expressed, or others about what we would like our power supply to be. And so.
Thank you, Dave. And I think, you know, as regards that, we can, we can probably codify that into print at one of our next meetings. I think it's a good idea.
John, can I make a comment? I'm actually curious with Johannes here. I was wondering if you can just give us a feel for the different biomass, maybe not their planning in Palmer, because I'm sure there's a lot of controversy and stuff, but just in general, I'm curious about, you know, we're reading a lot about biomass and the controversy around it. Are most biomass facilities burning that's been cut down? And it's not scrap wood that the type Bob talked about, or the tree trimmings and things like that? Like, what's the general sense of most of the wood burning biomass plants? What are they, what are they mostly burning? I'm just curious.
There's a big variety in biomass plants. So I spend a lot of time practicing in Oregon where a lot of the lumber mills have a wood burning facility on site. That kind of facility makes a lot more sense because there's not the transportation emissions that they've referenced in, you know, trucking this stuff from all over the state. There are certainly limitations in the permits in terms of what they are allowed to burn, but from a physical design perspective, they can burn anything from, you know, residential compost to chipped dried wood, which is, which is better to what they call tire-derived fuel, basically, you know, chipped tires. You know, these things can burn basically anything you put in them. And so the enforcement is certainly a piece that we are very concerned about, that is often lacking at these kinds of facilities. You know, the pile of wood chips at a municipal lot is a small fraction of the very, very large fuel inputs that a facility, you know, it's something like a 43 megawatt facility that will require tons of fuel. And where they're sourcing that from is also of great concern. So the big piece, you know, yes, putting wood to good use and getting fuel out of it is a valuable proposition, but from a climate perspective, it's also not a neutral source in that the term that we're talking about to grow a tree back is not valuable in the timeframe that we need to address carbon emissions. Right? So you chop a tree down and burn that wood, you don't get that carbon back out of the air for 30, 40, 50 years until that tree is mature. You know, the roadmap 2050 bill contemplates very significant reductions in carbon emissions over the coming decades. And so the timeframe is just not quite there. You know, biomass is a broader term, and so when you're talking about, you know, switchgrass or palm-derived oils that other countries and other climates frankly are more suited to produce and use, make more sense because there's a, you know, one-year turnaround, two-year turnaround in terms of the carbon neutrality of that biomass source. But when you're talking about, you know, some of these are decades-old trees that we are now incentivizing being cut down and burned, there just, there frankly isn't enough. You know, if we're thinking about, you know, the trees or the twigs and the leaves that we're collecting from a municipal compost stream, that's just not a sufficient source for a facility this size unless you're sourcing it from very far away. And then you really have to consider those transportation emissions in that calculation as well. So it's, you know, it's a very complicated, there's a lot of variables and, you know, I'm not speaking specifically just about Palmer here. I think looking at any such facility requires looking at all of those inputs, all of those calculations. And so I'll leave it there, but happy to.
Right.
Very, very helpful. Thank you.
The one, the one other sentence on that is, I think if we wanted to understand the relative merits of this plant, we might look at why many other municipal light plants, you know, elected not to enter into contracts with this particular proposed facility and why they decided not to. So that would be one thing I'd be interested in.
Well, I think that's, that's right. And I think, again, we'll leave that up to the General Manager to provide us with a full report on all of those different items. So could I get a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Hennessy, aye.
Mr. Stempak, aye.
Mr. Talbot, aye. Coulter.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'd like to move on to Integrated Resources. Chuck, power supply, please.
Good evening. I've got the typical slide pack to start with. One of the questions throughout 2020 has been how COVID-19 has impacted us. And if you take a look, we have both the forecast for 2020 and the actual results for 2019 up here. And what we saw for the first three months of the year again was weather-related impacts on the load, just January, February, and March, ran about 3% below what was anticipated and actually were lower than 2019 due to the fact that 2020 was the warmest winter on record. As into the summer, we saw a very hot June, and that showed in the loads. July was as expected. August was a little high. And September, down to be slightly higher than a year ago and a little bit below the forecast. So we seem to be tracking very well, but what I think is important for the point at which we've arrived in the year is that we are not seeing dramatic COVID-19 impacts. Our largest industries did not take a hiatus. The school closed for the last two months of the school year, but most of the negative impact on our.
You cut out, Chuck? Chuck, you, we can't hear you.
One that's considered as the budget is evaluated is that we simply said, we're going to hold our loads going forward at 2020. I've looked up what NOAA is predicting for this coming winter, and again, it is predicted to be average temperatures. So we are expecting it to be warmer and therefore use less fuels for heating and distribution networks. We have not seen fuels for, for heating and distribution networks. We have not seen a resumption of traffic into Boston as a result of not reopening the core buildings there. So commuter traffic is down and people are still working from home. With the exception of the manufacturing jobs. So basically we're that we hold the course in terms of the, the load forecast. And then this plays into the expenses that we have. Trace, if you could move to the next slide, please. What we've been seeing is that actual costs have been running below the budget numbers. And as a result, our power costs overall have been lower and the rates that we have charged to this point in the year have been lower. And I don't expect that there's going to be an escalation of cost through the end of the year, which would be essentially the, the fourth quarter year. The next three slides just show the breakdown between energy capacity and transmission. They are the ones that we present in every time and you can see that our portfolio is behaving as we expected that it would. So basically things are going well and we don't expect them to change for the rest of the year. Tracy, the, the next slide, please. I had the opportunity just over a week ago to meet with the Climate Action Committee and give them an update on what we have been doing. And I have presented the slide deck that I used that evening so that the commissioners can see what information we are presenting essentially to the town since the Climate Action Committee, I believe, takes this information and rolls it into reports to the Select Board. I'm not going to repeat the whole presentation tonight. But I did provide the package. Point of awareness. And this is my report.
Great. Thank you very much, Chuck. Appreciate that. In the financial report, Wendy.
Good evening. So I just wanted to give you a financial update through August 31st, 2020. So I want to give you some highlights of what's happening in the business finance section. We recently hired a new credit and collections manager, well overdue there. So we're very excited. We managed to file the 2019 DPU return on September 30th, which was on time. We distributed the calendar year 21 budget on October 1st and we had the CAB presentation of that budget earlier tonight. We have the Board of Commissioner presentation of the budget in November and upcoming major expenses and obligations. We have a pension obligation transfer to the Mass Municipal Depository Trust in December of $2.1 million. We have our second half of the 2% net payments to the four towns at the end of December of $803,000. And then we have the second half of the town of Reading payment at the end of December as well, which is $1.2 million. So I'm just giving you a, a quick look at the operating and maintenance expenses, January through August. So I can tell you right now that we are far under budget, but it's been quite a year. And we are hoping to level out in some areas, but the projection is that we're going to end the year at about a million dollars for operating and maintenance expenses under budget. Go ahead, Tracy. Thank you. So I just want to give you some highlights of why we're under budget and, and, and particular areas for it. So the one main area that we're seeing under budget are vacancies and it's across the entire organization. And it's due to the talent pool, the retirees and resignations. Of course, these are retirees and resignations that we were not aware of, and this is causing a decrease in spending. So when you look at the, at the financials that were attached to the package, we, we report everything based on FERC. So it's easy for you to identify based on the FERC number, what I'm, what I'm referring to. So FERC 580 is your grid asset management. FERC 582 is your station technicians. 588 is your materials management or your purchasing department. And then you have your group of linemen that are vacant, which affects 593, 94 and 98. And resource engineers for 916 and then your IT and admin staff under 920. Now, there were quite a lot of expenses that were halted or decreased because of COVID. And again, that's in FERC numbers 593 for your tree trimming program that was halted or decreased. 598, which is your vacation opportunities that the employees were not either able to take because we couldn't travel or because the demands on the RMLD were just too much to handle any missing individuals. FERC 916, you have the home energy audits, which were halted or decreased and your program activity was diminished. FERC 923, your education and training programs were canceled or diminished. 923, your legal proceedings were canceled or postponed, but I am expecting that to even out because now things are getting back on schedule. And then FERC 926 is your health insurance, which has decreased. And a lot of that's due to the vacancies. And then we did have some unforeseen spending, which offsets some of the decreases. 935 roof repairs and then the second portion of 935, the security monitoring measures for the IT infrastructure. And that was mainly due to the ransomware. So I've been keeping you up to date on COVID, same as Chuck and mainly, you know, cash is king. So we're concerned with bringing in the cash. And we do monitor this particularly through accounts receivable. The sales are what they are, but if the customers cannot pay timely, then we cannot strategically continue to plan. But I got to say that everything is knock on wood, we're, we're doing okay. So when we look at the 30 day turnaround, you can see from 2018, 2019 and 2020 that we're, we're creeping back up on 2020. So when I was looking at it from March through May, we were, we were coming down and then hit, hit the low point in June. And now you can see that yellow line is starting to come back up and it's, it's evening out. It's not there yet, but it's, it's getting there. And then the next slide shows the, the 90 day look, which is really what I measure most of it on based on timing. And you have your August. Again, we're right around the 95% mark. So that means we have 95% of our receivables in-house within 90 days. So when you look at the 30 days, the one thing it does tell you is a lot of the customers are not taking advantage of their prompt payment discount. So, you know, that's two sided. So we're, we're not gaining the, the cash fast enough, but at the same time, they're not getting the discount that they could get. So we are, we are still working very hard to help our customers. There have been some small businesses that had to shut down. We're trying to work with them to get some payment plans in all of our efforts and the fact that customers are working with us, it's, it's working.
Can I ask a question here?
Please go ahead.
I, I've noticed you've been presenting on this the last couple of months, Wendy. And it's a pretty significant difference, isn't it? What you've noticed here.
Well, it started off as about a 6% difference compared to what we typically would see. So it was a 6% decrease in how quickly the cash turns around. And that, and that does make a difference. So that's what we, we're certainly monitoring that, you know, for, for many reasons. And, but we're, we're coming back around. So I'm pleased.
All right. If you're not concerned.
No, I, I don't. I think Chuck and I are on the same page here as far as that. Everything is, is, we're managing to, to stay above it. This is good.
Good. Thanks.
That, that concludes my presentation. Any other questions?
Great. Thank you, Wendy. We do have a action item here for the OPEV Declaration of Trust. Perhaps Wendy or Colleen, could you provide a little bit of background on this, please?
Colleen, you're on mute. Did you want to?
Do you want to talk to this, Colleen? There you go.
Yes. Yeah, there's just minor changes that we had both town council and our council go through. The law allows the Board of Commissioners to choose the trustee. In this case, you appointed the, the town treasurer and he was looking for some, an ability to not be told by the commission that he would no longer be the trustee. Like the, the Board of Commissioners retains the right in accordance with the law to make a decision to change trustees and it might, it's more than likely not going to be personal. It's probably more focused on perhaps maybe the town is, is being a little bit too aggressive. Maybe we want to be less aggressive in our investments. So you retain that right under the law. So there was some language that went back and forth and we clarified some items and I think both parties are good. There's some minor adjustments that we could sign off on and then the town will is signing and then they will start to invest in PRRIT, which is the Retirement Fund Board that oversees the retirement funding. So they had made a presentation that it was about a 7% return. Right now it's sitting, I believe in a money market fund for not that much. So we're very interested in getting this signed and, and, and having the town treasurer, you know, invest it into the PRRIT.
Okay. Thank you, Colleen. Could I ask one of the commissioners to read the motion, please? Does anyone have it in front of them?
Dave, I didn't bring it up. Did you still?
I'm not pulling it up.
I could read it.
Get ready, John, for the next one. I'm going to open it up now. As a secretary, I've really dropped the ball as secretary today. I'm going to need some training from Phil.
That's right.
So I can, you want me to do it?
Sure. Go ahead.
This is 9B. Move that the Board of Commissioners adopt the amendments to the Declaration of the Trust as set forth in the proposed amendment and restated Declaration of Trust presented by the General Manager.
Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, could I call for a roll call vote, please? Mr. Stenbeck, I.
Mr. Talbot. Mr. Hennessy, I.
Mr. Gold, direct.
Thank you. Okay, great. We're on to item number 10, the Engineering and Operations Report. Hameed?
Yes, sir. Good evening. This is the report for the month of October. So the first slide. As you can see, the construction projects, they're, you know, they're continued and the progress, they're in progress. The big ones are, right, the major ones, it's a major construction of the North Main Street and Lowell Street in Linfield. That's the area upgrade, the stepped on conversions. So we got two portions overhead and underground. They're both moving along. This project is big. It's going to be a huge improvement to the reliability of the people in town on Linfield. And due to COVID-19, this project was moving slowly, but we trying to catch up toward the end of the year. So hopefully we can finish this by end of the year. The second construction, major construction is the switchgear replacement. These are the 29, part of the 29 total switch gears that, you know, we got in the system. These are aged and antiquated. We needed to, we upgrade them. So every year we do five of them. This year we've done two and these are the two more that the, the one completed, the Haven Street in Reading and there is another one that is scheduled to be replaced actually this Saturday. And this is a big job that is going to be done on River Park Drive and North Reading. So we ordered more switches and two of them, three of them, they arrived this year, late this year. So we could then schedule three more, but definitely this process is going to continue going to CBI 21 to replace the rest of them. The next slide, please. All right. This shows the analog electric vehicle charging stations. As you know, we are installing seven dual chargers. Analog parking lot. This is the new parking lot that they have. And these are the pictures. The job is completed now 100% and tomorrow.
For those of you who don't notice, the analog devices over in Wilmington.
Right. Right. So this is completed and the contractor finished the job tomorrow. The wire inspector is going to inspect it and hopefully everything passes and then they're ready to be used, utilized. So that shows the picture of the, some of the, the progress that they made. The next slide, please. Marion Street Wilmington Line Extension Phase Two. This is actually, we've made more progress this week. So this is close to 80, 85% complete now. And this is another one that's going to be completed. This completely overhaul pool, overhead primaries, secondaries, connectors, everything. It's being upgraded in that area, which is major to that section of the Wilmington, the reliability. The other project is the major, the manhole repairs in all towns. The 30 manholes that during inspection, we found that they're in poor conditions, the chimney walls and everything needed to be reconstructed due to the damage and the weather damage. So we have completed this project with the exception of five, that it's going to be done in the spring of 2021. That's a main street ready. All others, they're fixed. They're in good condition now. The construction project that recently we completed, this is a Westover and Kenwood Road in Wilmington and the area upgrade, which was again, this was a 138 KV upgrade, which these upgrades that we do as a 138 KV conversions, they are actually reducing the total system losses, which is the typical utilities. They have anywhere between seven, five to 7% losses. I'm glad to report that in our system with all the upgrades that we've done and the maintenance that we've done, we have brought that down to three and a half percent. So it's good. That means, you know, savings for the ratepayers. The next slide.
That's really huge, Hameed, isn't it? I mean, that's a, basically half of the losses have been recovered.
Oh, definitely. This is the money that, you know, part of it, you know, it's like what I said, major contribution to that is the maintenance work that, you know, it's been, it has been done and we continue to do that. And, you know, that's actually, we are among one of the, the, one of the few utilities that they have that kind of losses. You know, part of the other utilities, they're much higher. The other projects are power factor optimization software implementation. As I've been saying in previous reports, right now we have the outage management system and IVR integration completed. And the system, it's part of the SCADA system and the outage map that is going to be ready soon for the, for the ratepayers and all the customers to view the outage on the map on the website. So they're testing it right now. This project kind of put us a little bit behind the, the schedule due to COVID-19 and the malware attack that we had that it basically changed the entire setup. Now we're going back to trying to recover. Once that project is completed, then we're going to start this power factor optimization, which is going to further even reduce the losses and it's going to be ring more savings. The, the loss is going to be automatically taken care of by the cap banks and the system to lower. This is again, kind of the analogy of the beer and foam, you know, which you try to reduce the foam. And that's what this software is going to be able to do by reducing the losses further in the system automatically as the load comes on. So this is very, very important, you know, project, which we are hoping to be completed. Hopefully by end of the year, if not the first quarter of 2021, once the outage management system IVR is fully tested and functional. The other project, major project that is going on, the meter replacement project, as you know, RMLD has two metering system. A, one is AMI Eaton, the other one is AMR, that's Itron, which is antiquated. Basically 28,500 meters. They're at the end of the useful life, technology life. And we need to, you know, change out those meters. We send the RFP. We send the RFP out to see that, you know, see where the prices are. The prices are all over. So we decided to conduct a study just to make sure we do the right thing and we pick the best option possible for, for the RMLD and the ratepayers. So the consultant, Lemmerhead consultant was hired to do the study and he, they are completing the analysis and they're going to give us a recommendation by end of the year, which direction we're going to go, which one would be the best way to go. The next slide, please. Okay, these are the maintenance programs. I'm not going to go over all of them. You've seen that, you know, at every report. Basically, there's something that we just started new is a primary metering testing that it's being done by Anixter. We have approximately 80 to 100 primary metering in the system that we are testing. Some of the equipments are antiquated and they need to be upgraded. So we testing them for the accuracy as well as, you know, the reliability, just to make sure that we replace them. And that's not going to cause an outage for other valued customers, especially the commercials and industrials. That's basically mostly where the primary meterings are. So that is being done right now. So far approximately 20, 22 sites that have been inspected. And we expecting this project to end by mid-October. So that's a good thing. And then we're going to start replacing parts as needed based on the age and the, you know, the prioritizing. The, all other projects that are moving along, we're good. The inspection of the feeders, that's another thing that it's being done by the line crews and, you know, and we beefed up this inspection during the COVID crisis. And it's going, all in all, we're making great progress on the maintenance of the equipments of the system. Next slide, please. This shows the age transformer replacement program. Basically the transformers that they're aging with our target ages 25 and older. And we prioritize the transformers all over the system and we upgrade them. Obviously, the 25 years old transformer is not going to be replaced, but it's going to on the list to be replaced because we got many others, the transformers that they're aged over 30, 35 years. We started this program four, five years ago. It's been very successful. That has had a major contribution to the reliability system, which as you could see on the chart on the right, 35, 38% of the transformers have reached 25 years or they're older than 25 years. 62% are under, which is good. This is a good number. You're never going to see that, you know, 0% because it's a moving target as we are, we upgrading some of the transformers. And their, their next ones in line that they, they're reaching the 25 to 25th birthday. So we put them on the schedule to replace. This project was going slow during the COVID-19. You know, those, the months that, you know, were critical. But now we are catching up because usually if you are in anywhere in between 80 to 100 transformers a year that, so we're catching up and I'm expecting that, you know, by end of the year, we are close to 85, 90, which we are, which is good. Next slide, please. This slide shows the snapshot of the capital expenditures. Thus far, we have five and a half million year to date. And we budgeted 11 and a half and we got 6 million to go. So approximately by end of the year, we're going to be close to 8 million. So 8, 8 and a half. Next slide, please. These are showing the double poles. Basically, you see, I'm not going to go over everything, but this shows that, you know, the number of poles that, you know, we need to transfer. You see in Linfield and Wilmington, these are the areas that you've done major construction upgrades and nothing that, you know, we haven't done in other towns, other towns also included, especially Reading. But, you know, these towns, these are the ones that, you know, that were aged, infrastructure are located. So and we needed to do major, especially we wanted to do that before the winter this year. So to make the system stronger. So it's done. Now we are in the process of transferring our assets. It takes time. And again, we, it takes time because we wanted, we didn't want to have a major impact on our customers. We do understand that, you know, the people are working from home, the kids also now they doing the schooling from the home. So we trying to be very careful and be cognizant of the importance of the having power, making sure the people, we're not giving people outage if, you know, unnecessarily or bit prior planning, basically, we giving them the notice, enough notice when it's convenient. Some of them that, you know, the transformer overhead, we just bypass them. So we do them live. But some of them, they require shutdown, but we try to work with the customers and schedule them in the convenient time. The next slide. This shows basically the status of our reliability. This is the health of our system. As you could see for the story, for, for past five years, the last year to date is for 2020 up to September, you could see that, you know, all the indices, SAD, KD and SAFE, they're all well below the industry average and actually the national average and the regional average. So I'm hoping that, you know, we can keep these. We've got only two more months to go. And I believe that, you know, we're going to finish the year and hopefully if we're not having any more storms, you know, we should be in good, very in good shape and, you know, all in all, the reliability is great. Next slide.
Hameed, I'm hoping you're, you're monkeying those, those certificates from the national on your wall.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, we have three of them, John, and I'm sure this year we're going to get another one.
Excellent, excellent.
One. So again, it's, it's all, it's all for the maintenance and the, all the capital improvements and everything, the constructions, you know, these are very important in order to, you know, maintain the reliability. And again, I got to thank you all for helping us to achieve those goals. This slide shows the causes of outages as of September 2020. As you could see that this year we've had 10 storms, which for the past five years to date, the average been five. So we've had lots and lots of, you know, storm and as a result, you've had lots of tree that they came down as a result of the storm. And we have a good tree trimming program, but unfortunately, you know, during the storms and tornadoes or, you know, rains and here, there, there, the shallow roots of the pine trees, you know, they, they bringing them down from across the street onto our lines and, you know, then they make extensive damages. So we've also had number of more wildlife problems, even though that we use wildlife protection for all the equipment to just cover the exposed parts. But squirrels are very smart these days, you know, they know, they find their way toward the toward the energized part and, you know, they just, you know, get attracted. They go right underneath. So equipment, but the equipment, as you could see, you know, we are lower than the five years average, which shows that, you know, we are in the right direction, moving in the right direction. That basically concludes my meeting. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. Oh, yes, Rob.
Hameed, on, on, on Main Street, I know you mentioned that we're doing some manhole work. Is there any conduit infrastructure that would need to be prepared, placed in, in parallel with the paving that's going to happen next year? You know, any siphons coming out of the underground or did you check that?
Yes. What they've done during the manhole inspection, they checked the, you know, the status of conduits at the same time too. They, it hasn't been flagged. Obviously it's old because it's old, you know, we don't, they're going to rip out unless if, you know, we see that to be a problem. If we can get the cable right to the existing conduit, we're just going to leave it the way it is. Unless if the conduit collapsed, we have no reason to believe that, you know, there was any problem in midsection or on, on either side of the manholes. But that's a very good question, Rob, bigger Bob. Because what we do, when we do the inspection, we look at from both sides, the manholes. And obviously, if there is any problem, we put them in the capital authorization plan to replace them and fix them. But so far it's been a manhole problem. The chimney wall mostly because of traffic and the age. You know, the bricks been collapsing and, you know, the manhole covers, they're not fitting right and here, there. It was a safety issue that we addressed and we have addressed them. We only got five more left to do out of the 30. And they're, they're going to be done in the spring, but these are not really in tough shape. It's something that needs attention, but, you know, it's not immediate safety concern.
We're not digging Main Street for five years after, after the spring.
Famous last words, Rob.
The cable blows up in April.
You never know, you know, in the electric, I've seen the strange things happen, like, you know, last month, we have, we had a cable failure during the rain, the water got into the conduit. And some, for some reason, you know, we had the midspan failure of the cable at Station 4. And this is actually, we get into the next section, we replaced the other 1,000 feet of cable. We only had 500 feet, 600 feet that we replaced and we still got another 50% of, you know, 500 feet to go in order to replace it, which we didn't have the cable. We used all the cable available. And that's part of this bid that, you know, next section that you're going to be going over.
Well, that's a good segue.
Yeah.
I'm ready to go, John.
Okay, yes, sir. Please do so.
Send me an email, tell me how to do it. All right. It is number 11, I believe, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. Move that bid number IFP 202015 hourly rates. As needed distribution line work of all types be awarded to Power Line Contractors Inc. pursuant to MGL Master of Law, Chapter 30, Section 39M, as the lowest responsible and eligible builder on the recommendation, the General Manager.
Now the second?
Second motion.
Thank you, Rob. Discussion?
Do you want me to explain that?
Yes, if you could.
By all means. You know, we send the bid, this is a three-year contract. Every three years, we send a bid out. We give the sample constructions, different type of constructions to the bidders. The bid was sent out to 13 companies. And out of the 13, we had the four company that they responded to the bid. And based on the scenarios that, you know, we created, the lowest responsible, responsive bidder was power line contractors that, you know, well, we still have them, the same company that you're using today. So they came out the lowest and the rest of them, they're really higher, about maybe $200,000 higher than them that they came up.
That's good. You've got some continuity then with this.
That's correct. The average for the past three years with the last contract, you know, we've spent approximately, oh, the total to date, we spent 2.5 million dollars for past three, four years. But we've done major, major constructions that, you know, without that, would have been almost impossible to achieve or do. So that's been really great.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, could I have a roll call vote, please? Mr. Stempak, aye?
Mr. Hennessey, aye.
Thank you, Rob. Okay. Should we move on to the next one? Next motion?
Yes. Okay. Move that IFP 2020-38 for 750 MCM 15 KV power cable be awarded to Arthur J. Hurley Company, Inc. For $178,851.15 pursuant to Master of Law, Chapter 164, Section 5060 on the recommendation of the General Manager.
Second, please. Thank you, Rob. Any discussion? There's a little bit of back, oh, you, I think you talked about the background.
Yes.
That's not good.
You know, we sent, we just said, anything, the only thing that I got to add, we send a bid to 13 distributors and we got five responses back. Four of them, they did not give us the firm pricing because of the cost of the metal that keeps going up, down. So they did not. But the only one that gave us a firm price was the Arthur Hurley Incorporated. And the price that they gave us, it is in line with what they have been basically offering for past contracts since 2016. So it's been average of 13 and a half, $14. So it's very consistent with what they've done.
Thank you.
Colleen, I'm sorry. Hameed, why, why are so many other bidders not willing to give firm pricing then? Why is only one willing to do that?
Because of the escalation of the metal prices. So this, this is a strong company and, you know, they have been very, they always give us the firm price. I don't know why. Other than they know the cost of the metal that keeps, you know, going up. And also some of them, also they cannot commit to the delivery. So as I see, some of them, they, they were committing to 12 weeks, 12 to 14 weeks delivery as opposed to eight weeks that, you know, this company, Arthur Hurley, is committing to give us the overnight cable. And we need this cable to finish the rest of the route for the failure that we had last year. And, you know, that's, that's going to help us to finish that job. So the entire route is going to be brand new cable from the Breaker to, to the Manhole Austin Street and Riser Pole.
Are there any other questions? Yes, Rob?
Yeah. So I, I guess, Hameed, one other question. In the general inventory that you maintain, it sounds like you're going out to bid for each individual, each individual pieces. Number one is, would you be better off with a a consistent supplier? And number two, what do we keep for a floating stock in?
Yeah, we do. We generally try to keep around 500 feet, five, anywhere 5 to 700. That's our minimum stocking level. So whenever we go below that, you see that the bid is coming to, to do that. So this is going to give us enough to have the, for stocking as well as replacing the, the remaining part.
Okay. Yeah, that, that 500, yeah, you, you might be a thought to maybe increase that just because of situations like this. If you lose 1,000 feet or a, a section of manhole, maybe it might be best to, you know, keep a couple, maybe 1,000 and 2,000 feet of cable on hand. Maybe that, you know, something the board can consider. Sure, it would be an expenditure.
Sure, we could look, look, look into that. We could do that. Except where you're going to be careful also for one thing, we, because the cables, we can't, this amount of cable, we can't just keep them in how, in, in the, in the barbers building. So it's going to have to be in the, exposed in the environment. And if they stay there for too long, that's
Yeah, we had a case a number of years ago where someone broke in and stole cable, as I recall, correct?
Yeah, it's got, it's got to be indoors. Yeah, it can't be outside.
Yeah, that's right. Indoor, and this is huge reels. These are 750 MCM cable. You know, almost inch and a half diameter, inch, inch and a half. So it's, it's big and the vandalism and everything, you know, but we keep enough that usually we can find, we have enough. For the past six years that I've been here, this has been one of the major failures that we've had, that we used whatever we had in the stock. And now this is the remaining plus some that it's going to be left in the stock. But you're right, we should, we should have enough just in case of the major failure we have. All the other feeders, by the way, they're all upgraded now recently based on the reliability study that we did with five, five years ago. So almost most of those feeders are brand new. So we got only a few more that we're scheduling for the next three, four years that, again, we go by the age and the priority. So as we go through the reliability improvements, those are going to be replaced and those are going to be upgraded. And then all the getaways, they're going to be a brand new.
There are no more questions. Could I have a roll call vote, please? Mr. Stempak, aye?
Mr. Hennessey, aye.
Mr. Hennessey, aye.
School direct.
Thank you. Our item number 12 is just general discussion. Our next board meeting is Thursday, November 19th. And the CAB will be meeting prior to that meeting. And I believe Vice Chair Hennessey will be attending. uh Vice Chair Hennessy will be attending that meeting.
Yes.
Correct, thank you. Uh there were no account payable or payroll questions. So uh with that, um could I have a a motion to uh move into executive session, please?
So moved.
Second. I I need you to read it, though.
Move to adjourn to regular session. There's something more to read?
Oh, yeah, there's something in item number thirteen.
Oh, okay, read the whole thing.
Read the whole thing.
Phil would be, Phil would be very disappointed to me. Move.
Gotta get you trained.
Move that the board go into executive session to consider the purchase of real estate, real property and to discuss confidential, competitively, competitively sensitive or proprietary information in relation to making, selling or distributing electric power and energy in return to a regular session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Second, please. Second. Uh roll call vote, Mr. Stempack, aye?
Mr. Hennessy, aye.
Talbra. Mr. Gold, right?
Excellent. Thank you very much, everyone. I'll see you in executive session in just a minute or two. Thank you, everyone.
Bye, everybody. Thanks, everybody.